I'd like to call the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. The order is Monday, September 18, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. If you could please stand in for a place.
I plead allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Reagan.
Right there.
Mr. King.
Here.
And Mr. Redd.
Here.
Move down to public hearings. We have an application for assignment for tax sale certificate to nonprofit corporation. 2501 West Mount Pleasant Boulevard, Muncie, Indiana.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Walters, East Central Indiana Regional Planning District. I've been working with Commissioner Reagan. This is the old CR3 tire plan. We have identified three businesses, two within the Southdale Industrial Center that is interested in the property while we're requesting it, and then we will send it out for request proposal. We have contacted the previous, or the current owner that was in California that bought it into tax sale. Obviously, no taxes paid. She did pick up the letter, but we got no response.
Is there anybody else here for or against? I've entertained a motion to close the public hearing. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Moving down the table of business. Agreements for collection, I believe we're going to keep this on the table until October meeting. So, I'll need approval of minutes for September 5, 2017.
Second.
Question, second for approval of minutes. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Moving up to presentations for the Commissioners. Mr. Jack Kraus with Construction Control Incorporated.
Good morning, Commissioners. Obviously, I'm Jack Kraus with Construction Control. We're normally referred to around the state of CCI, and I'm here to just present the firm and myself for further consideration as the jail may move forward. To give you a little background on the firm, we've been constructing jails and overseeing the design of jails since 1980. The largest jail we've done in Indiana is 800 beds. The smallest is 70. We've done some renovation and created jails up in Michigan using older factories, which is somewhat unique, which saves a lot of money. My personal opinion is, is that as you move forward, you're probably at least to next year's legislative session perhaps, but these things all take time. I don't think there's any question that the need is there, and it has been for some time, but the issue of the public and the funding and all those sorts of things, those are hurdles that you'll have to get over. I don't think this project is P3 valid, simply because the law specifically says infrastructure and economic development, and I don't see any attorney that would validate that as an option in a jail. To give you a sense of jail costs, they are somewhat going crazy right now, as you can imagine. Everybody in the United States is building jails. California, for example, has several billion uncounted jails. Currently, there is one jail, one door supplier, security door supplier in all of the United States. So, the question is, you're going to pay more for the door, quite obviously. The question, more importantly, is, can you get the door in the first place? So, we do so much jail work that we know all these suppliers and what have you. The public probably doesn't realize this, nor the Commissioners, but a jail is comprised of about 40 percent of the building material in a jail is specific to a jail. The doors, the hardware, the door controls, the cells, all that sort of thing. So, you have to be very, very familiar with how a jail is constructed. I'm more than happy to ask for any questions you may have now or in the future. We do this as a normal course so often that we're pretty knowledgeable on cost and size expected and so on. We like to pride ourselves as construction managers. I might point out, too, that that's all we are and all we have ever done, is construction management since the firm started in 1969. We have no affiliation with contractors, subcontractors, architects, engineers. Our job is to protect the taxpayers of Delaware County and the communities that we work in. And to that end, we don't want any perception of a difficult situation of being affiliated with contractors and architects and what have you. And we work with all of them, all of the current jail architects in Indiana. There's, interestingly enough, five in Indiana right now, three that have been doing jails for as long as I've been in the business, and two more that have sort of sniffed out this marketplace, one from Chicago and one from Cincinnati. They currently have opened offices in Indianapolis, and sooner or later, they'll get their jail job in Indiana, I would imagine. So, as you move forward in that arena, keep very, be very aware of the fact that most building problems, jails included, are engineering problems. So, when you go searching for an architect, think more in terms of the engineer, because in all likelihood, that's where the building problems will come from. So, that's it for my end. When the time comes, I would appreciate you considering us to help you with your jail project, but that may be months down the road, certainly.
Well, Jack, you've been attending our meetings, and I do appreciate it, and you and I have had some conversations. And the one, couple of questions I have, though, of course, going down this route, is our need and our assessment of what we need and what's best for Delaware County. And then also, on our old jail, how we, if we do move to a new jail, how we can use that building, because we need a work release when the felons, when they return home. Folks need a place to live, I don't know, but is that something you've ever done?
Yes, there's various options. The only jail that I know of in Indiana that the county actually used the old jail in a meaningful way was Peru, Miami County. They, but you have to remember that that was an old guards corridor jail with bars that can be cut away, opening up space for officers and what have you. In your jail's case, you have very hard construction. It's crowded block, which means it's very difficult to open up. Some other options, Homeland Security has kicked around the idea of sending people on their way to other facilities, renting space in Indiana. And when they do that, they want jail-like environment. They don't want to send them to a work release facility, which means your jail can comply with that sort of arena, and of course, work release. So, there are options, but in most cases, those options are not particularly meaningful, I'm sorry to say.
I was afraid that you were going to say that we do need to move forward and...
I may point out that when you do a needs assessment, the way it's done, they will go to the sheriff's office, they'll get all the statistics for the last five or 10 years away. You have to be sensitive to the fact that those statistics may well be worked, worked in a lot of ways. One, the jail might be full, which means the bed count is not really an accurate bed count of what you should have had in 1997, but rather what you had. So, if you make those adjustments, then the study is valid. And of course, all it is really is a mathematical trend analysis that creates a line. Most counties want to be sure that whatever they do is large enough to sustain them for the next 20 years, because that's typically what the bonds are for. And in my early days, when we built jails, we didn't build them for expansion. We didn't think that way, oh, this is so big, it will never need it. When we did Allen County, we did make that big enough, and we added on to it twice now. And the third time we added on, we broke the bubble. We had to up save the kitchen and the intake and all those various other things. But now, that's the normal course. You automatically built it from that expansion.
Thank you very much for driving down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
About a roundabout figure, would we be looking after a bed?
Well, I will tell you this number, but it could very well change next week.
And I understand that.
The current bed cost is about somewhere around, well, I'll give you the history. Adams County is the most recently built jail in Indiana. It was occupied this past February, keeping in mind that it was constructed and bid several years ago, and it was $80,000 debt. Now, that's construction cost, not project cost. You've got to add another third to that. I would say right now, you are looking at a jail of your side, because the bigger the jail is, the more efficient it comes of cost. Probably something of $100,000 debt range. If you're looking at next year, you might want to think $110,000 debt, which is a horrendously expensive number. I mean, it just is, because of the nature of the beast.
Thanks, Karen. Appreciate it.
Next, DMS, diversified mail service.
Good morning. My name's John Petsack. I'm with that diversified mail services, also known as DMS. I believe you guys might have some literature that was provided. If not, I brought some extra copies in case. All right, perfect. So, we actually been around since 1984. We're business lines partners with United States Postal Service, and basically what we do is we help a lot of different organizations and companies lower their overhead and all their mailing costs by helping them achieve lower postage rates, which the United States Postal Service provides to us, because we handle about 300,000 pieces a day for them. Handle so much mail for them every day. We actually have a clerk on site from the post office that signs off on every single piece of mail that comes in and goes out. Everybody at our organization is HIPAA and privacy certified and trained, from our drivers to our operations, to the owners and myself. We actually help one of your neighbors right down the street, Ball Memorial, along with a few other different companies in your guys' area. We handle a lot of different counties, though, too, Hendrix, Boone, Vigo. We just started partnering with Tipton County just within the last couple of months. But what I'm proposing today to do for you guys is help you guys achieve those lower postage rates, which we have with so many other counties. Right now, you guys are paying 46 cents per piece of mail, and that's just for one ounce. It does go up in price, as you can see on that literature that I provided for you. It will increase up to three and a half ounces, I think it goes up to $1.9. And what I'm proposing we do is, I know you guys are using meter equipment, and that's fine. About 90 to 95 percent of the people we partner with are using Pitney Bowes, Neopost-type machines, and that's completely fine. This won't void your contract whatsoever. We don't require a contract, and we don't have fees for this. It's pure savings for you guys. We would put 42.3 cents on the meter for you, and the best thing about this is, you're not going to have to worry about the price going up every ounce, every half ounce, because that price rate, 4.423, so he's the same all the way up to three and a half ounces. So, I know there is no delays. What comes into our facility goes directly to the post office the same day. It's actually enhanced delivery time sometimes, just because we do so much of the work for them, it's able to just get out there even quicker. This is what I'm mainly proposing we do, is just put a lower rate on your postage machine. We already picking up right down the street from you guys, along with some other companies in the Muncie area, and there would be no delivery delays, there would be no fees, and it would just be pure savings for you guys. I think about up to 67 cents on a three and a half ounce piece of mail. And we also handle, you know, everything to do with mail, flats, parcels, certified mail. We've actually developed a new program. Instead of using the old green cards, I don't know if you are all familiar with it, but whenever you have to send out a certified piece of mail, we're sending out these right here. And they're kind of tedious. These rip off and they get lost. It's just not a really good way to do it, especially for the court system. So, we actually developed a new program called confirmed delivery. The best thing about this program is, a lot of times, and, you know, the court system, you have to pull things up from multiple years back. Well, with confirmed delivery, nothing has ever gone. It's always going to be there, but with the old way of doing things, everything's actually purged after two years and archived after six months, so it can be kind of hard to track down some information for that. This process for confirmed delivery, we don't charge for hardware or software. The only thing we would charge for is transactions. It's about a 50, 52 cents average savings compared to the old way of doing things. I've seen it much higher, too. Tipton County saving a little over a dollar doing that now. It's very easy. Whoever is going to be handling, is going to like this system a lot better, just because they don't have to use for tracking, remembering that 20-digit number. You can actually search by any criteria, dates, events, company names, addresses, and this is all supported by Sennan Bell 310. It's been around for over 15 years. We have companies that are pulling things up from 16 years ago right on the bench. So, it can definitely help out a lot. The last thing that I wanted to let you know about is, I know current, well, I don't know if all your departments are using the same meter machine, I believe they are, but when the time comes to reevaluate the lease, when it's coming up to be expired, we do have an option to completely get rid of that overhead cost. You won't have the monthly or quarterly billing for that, I think, Pitney Bowes machine we're using. We can actually meter all your mail for you at the same rate. We won't charge for it or anything. You'll still be paying the 4.423, and that's pretty much it.
Jen, you've been aware of this. We've been talking to him. Something would you like to add?
He met with me a few weeks ago, and he shared a lot of this information with me, so I thought it was worthwhile to reach out to James and see if he was interested.
So, we would keep Gary. Gary would still sort it.
Gary would stay, yes, our mail guy. And I believe we just re-upped our contract with Pitney Bowes, so, you know, that one would be a delayed part of it. But it all seemed, you know, pretty realistic, and so I thought it was worth putting on the schedule.
And they come to us, or we have to take them?
Nope, they come here.
They come here, okay. Sounds good.
Are there any more questions?
Although that we, DMS, diversified mail services, has proposed.
Joe, we wouldn't need a contract or anything, but...
Do you guys need an agreement?
If your guys' government wants us to sign any sort of agreement or lease forms or anything like that, we're more than happy to comply, but we do not require any sort of contracts. If you guys ever decide you want to disperse and go a different route, no harm, no foul.
There you go. Okay.
Sure, made a motion, I'll second it. Have a motion, a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Next, we have Veterans Affair, Nate Jones.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, I'm actually here to recognize a few individuals that I think need to be recognized for some of their outstanding work within the community. So, the first individual I want to bring up is a kid by the name of Timothy Cordell, right? And then his father, Chris Cordell. Timothy is actually in the process of trying to get his Eagle Scout, and as you guys know, this Friday, we have what's called the Stand Down for Muncie Community, and Timothy took it upon himself, in order to get his Eagle Scout, to raise upwards of $1,900 to buy clothes and belongings that these folks could take home with them to stay warm throughout the winter, or whatever it is. And he's actually been doing this for eight to nine years. He's a senior at Yorktown High School, and I just thought it was relevant to give him an animal way and tell him thank you for all you're doing, and it means the world to me. So, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next thing I wanted to talk about was, we wanted to kind of give a report, and John, I don't know if you want to help me out with it at all or not, but talk about the hurricane incident that we went down on, and put him on the spot, didn't I? We actually went down there, and we took a lot of donations, a lot of materials down to folks. We helped roughly six families out. And honestly, it was inspiring for me. It gave me a whole new outlook on helping people. I mean, I've been, been to war, I've serviced people in the VSO office, I've been an insurance agent, but this was just a totally different view. And so, I guess what I wanted to do, first and foremost, was we brought you guys some shirts back from the firehouse that housed us while we were there. And we just wanted to give those to you guys for our thank you for allowing us the opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
We're very proud of you guys and the pictures and everything. Obviously, I was following you on Facebook, and we're proud of you guys, and you and your team did an awesome job.
Well, thank you. And then, the last thing I want to do is, I do want to recognize a couple individuals for what they did. First and foremost, I do want to recognize Ralph Smith. He, him and his guys covered our entire office while we were gone, but they also donated quite a few materials to the support of the relief for those guys. And then, I also would like to bring up Mr. Nick Albertson and Mr. Hines, Mac Hines. And they just want to say a little something. We've decided to partner with them on more of a just reaching out basis and trying to help out our veterans, and they're going to kind of talk a little bit about what they've done and what they got going on. So, Mac, if you want to step up there for a second.
First of all, we want to thank you for your time. I'm Mac Hines, this is Nick Albertson. I'm the president and co-founder of Big Time Barbell. We're just in the very beginning stages of Big Time Barbell. We're a 501(c)(3) corporation that started, you know, what we're seeing is drug addiction and depression in Delaware County. You know, and one way or another, it's affected the whole community. And we found some ways that really trigger post-treatment. And, you know, while there's a lot of facilities that are, have great recovery and counseling groups, there's not a facility that stands for a healthy lifestyle change. And in order to achieve long-term recovery, it has to be a complete lifestyle change. So, me and Nick have worked with Road to Redemption. We're networking with the veterans. We have several organizations that are willing to help, and through social media, we, it was unbelievable how many people reached out to us that would like our help. What we do, we work on workout regimens. We get your body healthy, nutrition, and, you know, at the beginning stages, we intended on just helping a few people, and the outreach has been overwhelming. We've done some videos on YouTube that's over 40,000 views, Facebook over 15,000. So, that's the beginning stages. What we'd like to do is, is open up our own gym, that we can bring groups in from recovery groups, the veterans, you know, with depression or what have you, to come in and work out at our gym, utilize our tools of knowledge for nutrition and physical fitness, to get your, you know, your whole body in sync. And that's the key to long-term recovery, is what we feel. So, we thank you for your time, and we hope to be talking with you again soon.
Hey, Mac, why don't you just touch base? Mac and their organization raised quite a few donations for this hurricane thing that we went on. And I just, I think it's important to notate that in the process of while these guys are trying to do their own nonprofit and trying to help people in the community, they also were able to donate a substantial amount of donations to the cause, and I just think that they're, they're an animal as well for that, so...
Nick, while you're there, repeat your telephone number a couple times, so people watching this at home can know.
That's where, that's where it reaches.
I appreciate it.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have contracts and agreements, the LPA consultant contract.
Good morning, Commissioners. This contract is a standard and dot for like, contract that we fill in the space is basically, basically, this is for construction inspection services of Bridge 226, located on County Route 419 East over Carmel Greenway. Leading is February of next year. I just need your authorization to report with this.
I make a motion, we approve the LPA contract.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we have resolutions for approval. We have resolution number 2017-037. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Delaware, Indiana, making a final determination of the tax sale certificate to be assigned to a nonprofit corporation.
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution 2017-037.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we have resolution number 2017-038. Resolution of Board of Commissioners of Delaware County, Indiana, identifying tax sale certificate to be assigned to a nonprofit corporation, number nine.
Good morning, Commissioners. Janet Kessler, Tax Sale Deputy. Originally, you assigned this tax sale certificate to Future Choices, and there were some issues about them sending out their notices per statute, so Joe Redd advised me to go through the process again, so that's why I am presenting that resolution and setting the public hearing for October 16.
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution 2017-038.
Second.
A motion, a second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we have Department Heads and elected officials. If I have anything.
Paul Simmleton, Director of 911. I was made aware last week of a letter that you received from a former employee talking about things in 911. I don't feel that at this time it's appropriate to really discuss this openly like I had wanted to. We are in the process of starting a new training class with new hires, so I would like you, at some point in the next couple of weeks or so, stop in at your leisure, view what we're doing with our training process, and just see for yourself what we're doing. I wasn't happy with some of the things that were in that letter, and at any point that you feel like you have questions, I'll be glad to answer a little.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
Anyone else? Move on to payment of claims in amount of $1,425,298.32.
Seven.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, payment of claims. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we'll take questions, comments from the public.
Sorry it took so long to get back with you. My name is Bill Tarrell, live at 3,600 Stonewick Lane, founder of the Fallen Heroes Memorial Bridge Committee. I spent 16 days out in Houston, so I'm just now getting back with you. You all should have a copy. We have 13 members. Nine of those members are survivors. So, if something was ever happened to me, I don't see that this bridge ceremony would ever stop again, because I made it a purpose to stack the committee with survivors. And I said, my last one, I don't know if you want me to read the list to you or not, or it's up to you.
It's up to you. If you want to read it, you can. If you don't, you don't have to.
I can tell you, it's me and my wife, Tracy Maddie, Paul Garrison, Phil Garrison, Laura Garrison Boggs, Lauren Baroker, Natalie Brocker Evans, Jake Davis, Nate Jones, Ralph Jigger Smith, Mike Curless, and Molly Winters Carey.
Sounds like a good committee.
Yes.
Do you have a date yet?
We're going to, I'm going, when I leave here, I'm going down to second floor and get some dates put together and call everybody and see what would be the best day. And the banners were taken down, because we're going to get them clean. I'm going to, you guys are going to type up a letter, I'm going to take it down to the mayor's office, and in his donation that he pledged, he'll buy banners with it, and so that there should get us about eight or nine banners. And another thing I want to bring up, I've been hearing a lot of complaints... And another thing I want to bring up, I've been hearing a lot of complaints about, "We've got a beautiful bridge, but the handrails are horrible." I mean, that's every complaint I ever got, is those rusty handrails. Is there any way that those can be replaced? I mean, you're looking at a memorial. They should be, you know, it should be beautiful. People talks about how beautiful it is. But then at the end, they say, "Hey, the handrails are horrible."
What?
Angie, can you?
Well, I looked into this, gosh, four or five years ago, and I'm just talking bridge only, not a long-wheeling avenue. Just to take them down, have them cleaned up and repainted, $50,000. And it's not just taking them down. We will have to do sidewalk closure, provide traffic, you know, pedestrian traffic along Highway Street. But the $50,000 I didn't feel comfortable with is because we're going to be in the same scenario that we're in right now. It's not going to last for a long time. We need to go with a different method, which is very, very costly.
Can you look into that?
Sure.
Kirkman, Kirkman, if I'm wrong, is in the city? Look at something.
I've heard often on, yes, but I don't, I don't know.
Not our bridge part, though.
They, Duke Campbell from the City Street Department, him and I have talked about it often on for a few years. Just really haven't.
I have been wondering, as you go north on.
But it's funding that I'm needing.
Right. As you go north on the bridge, right next to the right-hand lane, could those, that section, could those come down?
I could check into it, but I believe there's a height restriction required.
Well, that's my one, but I didn't know if it was as high as Jackson Street, and so that's.
It would, it probably require a different type of railing to meet the height requirements. Now, Jackson Street, we use a method that's used on marine-type equipment, boats, that type of thing. It's called Plazco. And there's some other brands, and it does last a lot longer, but it is very costly.
Have you taken, I know Mr. Ross's company did it once by the memorial. Have you been down to the top side?
I haven't seen it. I was told they weren't holding. They're starting to show deterioration already. So we went one of them, and that was just done two years ago.
We'll look into it, Mr. Tarrell.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
No.
Thanks for your effort.
Thank you.
Nobody else on here saying anything?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Tim Maloney. I work for the Hoosier Environmental Council. And I just wanted to give you a brief update on what's going on with our Mounds Greenway project. I know Commissioner Reagan was interested in hearing the latest about this. And just to recap for people, the Mounds Greenway is a proposal for a linear park and trail system along the White River between Muncie and Anderson and ultimately downstream to Indianapolis. And last year, we talked to communities and folks up here about our economic health and environmental benefits analysis for the Mounds Greenway. And since then, we've been working on more framework for seeing how we can implement the project in the first phase between Anderson and Muncie. And that work right now is focused on the Chesterfield area. We've divided the corridor between Muncie and Anderson into six segments to make the planning and implementation a little more user-friendly. So we are in the process of talking to landowners and to the town government of Chesterfield, also to the Department of Natural Resources in terms of the role of Mounds State Park in the Mounds Greenway, and have had good dialogue at all those levels. And expect to go back before the town of Chesterfield in early October. In the meantime, we're looking at another public presentation there in the Chesterfield area. We're talking to Camp Chesterfield, the historic spiritualist camp that's on the National Register of Historic Places, and talking to them about a role for the camp in the Greenway. And that's drawn the interest of Indiana Landmarks, which is Indiana's largest historic preservation organization. So I think there's a lot of interest and momentum continuing to accompany the Mounds Greenway proposal. Earlier this summer, we announced support from both Mayor Tyler and three mayors in Hamilton County, Mayors Brainard, Cook, and Ditzler, who are supporting the Greenway project. The cities of Indianapolis and Hamilton County tourism are embarking upon a White River strategic planning process that we think will integrate nicely with the Greenway and the notion of a protected corridor of some sort all the way from Muncie to Indianapolis. We have pledged, as in the past, that we want to create the Greenway, working with willing landowners. We don't support the notion of condemnation for this project. So we are, have started on that dialogue process with landowners and finding some interest. And of course, there will be some landowners who are not interested in being part of that, and we'll respect that. But, and then going from there, we'll be looking at opportunities to collaborate and implement with other communities along the corridor, folks in Daleville, and also in Yorktown. We've briefed some Yorktown leaders again recently on our progress and hear supportive comments from leaders in Yorktown as well. So that's what's going on in a nutshell. For those who want to know more about the Greenway and what's going on, we have a dedicated webpage, moundsgreenway.org. We have a new video that we posted earlier this summer. We have an awareness-raising bicycle ride coming up here at the end of the month, September 30th, what we call Ride for the Mounds. We'll have three different ride distances depending upon your level of interest. We'll be staging out of canoe country in Daleville, and we'll have some festivities and a raffle after the ride and some live music there at the canoe country property. So we invite everybody in Delaware County to come out and join us, particularly if you're a bike rider. But even if you're not, you can come by for the music afterwards, so.
What's the hours on that?
The early registration is 11:00 a.m., and then the rides start leaving just afternoon. There's a 45-mile ride for the serious people and a 25-mile ride and a 15-mile ride. And we'll be riding along the county roads in the vicinity of the Mounds Greenway corridor. The longest ride will be on part of the Cardinal Greenway. So that'll come into Muncie and then back out to Daleville. We'll ride through Chesterfield and Daleville and Yorktown and all those areas. And it's, if you've never biked that area, it's just such a pretty corridor.
So there's no two-mile ride?
If you want to come over and go for, go out a mile and come back a mile, that's fine with us.
What time does the music start?
Music starts at 5:00. Yes.
Nice afternoon for a family.
Yeah, it sounds like it. So, and happy to answer any questions. Registration for the bike ride is also on our Mounds Greenway page, so would love to see everybody come out.
Your new little video that you posted is wonderful. It really shows Muncie and Delaware County and all the work that you're doing and planning. I appreciate it.
Sure. And that video includes some of our partners, the Redtail Conservancy, the Robert Cooper Audubon Society here in Muncie, Friends of White River. We've got, we now have over 50 organizations and businesses who have endorsed the Mounds Greenway throughout Indiana.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? entertain a motion of recess?
Subway.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Steve, can you call the rule?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes, have a recess.